I'd like to get a motion to come out of executive session.
Madam Chair, I move that we come out of executive session.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Camson. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll and read the resolution.
A resolution certifying the executive meeting of the School Board of the City of Norfolk in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Whereas, the School Board of the City of Norfolk has been in a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas, section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires the certification by the School Board of the City of Norfolk that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the School Board of the City of Norfolk hereby certifies that. To the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the School Board of the City of Norfolk. Bassin?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, I now call the business meeting for December 15th, 2021, to order. First up, please call the roll, Ms. Tanner.
Bassin?
Here.
Camson?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Martin?
Present. Um, sorry, just doing too many things at once. Okay. Up next, we're going to vote on the candidate for the Ward Four School Board position. But before we do, I just want to express on behalf of my school board colleagues our sincere appreciation for everyone who applied to serve the Norfolk Public School community. On Wednesday, December 3rd, we invited the three finalists to interview for the position. And I have to say again, I cannot stress this enough, how difficult this decision was. And I'm just so thrilled of the caliber of candidates that we, um, that we had before us. And it was, it was a tough decision, but of course, we can only choose one. So, um, but I do, I guess, I do want to say, um, I hope that the others that were not selected for the position do continue to stay involved in our community, and particularly with Norfolk Public Schools. They each had something very, really valuable to contribute to, um, to our students and to our community. And I'm really looking forward to working with them in whatever capacity that should be moving forward. So with that, can I get a motion?
Please, thank you. Madam Chair, I move that we appoint Dr. Leon Ralston to fulfill the Ward Four seat vacated by Ms. Christine Smith on November 3rd, 2021, as an interim Ward Four School Board member to expire on December 31st, 2022.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Uh, I'm going to, uh, it was important to me that I thought that we had three excellent candidates. Uh, I believe that Ms. Smith brought a very important perspective to the board. Uh, I think all three candidates that we had were excellent candidates. But I think that we had an opportunity to make sure that, uh, the voice of African-American women who live in Norfolk are represented on the school board and are represented even more so in our decision-making that currently exist. And so I look forward to working with, uh, uh, if indeed, Mr. Ralston, I look forward to working with him. But I personally thought it was important for us to maintain, uh, the diversity that we had on the board and to make sure that the voice of African-American women who live in Norfolk and in Ward Four be represented on the board. So I vote aye.
Martin?
Aye. And the ayes have it. Look forward to working with Dr. Ralston. Thank you, everyone. Okay, um, up next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance by our student representative, Ms. Karma Johnson.
Good evening. We request that all cell phones and pagers are to be turned off to vibrate or to vibrate during this course of the meeting. Thank you. Please rise and remain standing for the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Um, up next, we have item 3.05, our superintendent's report. Dr. Birdsong?
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Martin, Mr. Clanton, members of the board, and members of our community. Every month, we look forward to sharing with you what our brilliant scholars are doing in our schools. And this evening, you will be able to witness some of those amazing things that we're doing to include a new college and career center at Granby High School. You will hear about some storywalking at Calcott Elementary School. And we had the wonderful opportunity to host vaccination clinics within our schools, and we're very proud of that. And so you'll see a little bit of that within the video. And finally, an exciting signing day at Maury High School. So Channel 47, please roll the video. Thank you.
Granby High School held an official opening for their college and career center in December. Visitors from colleges, the military, and the Norfolk Sheriff's Office were on hand to celebrate the occasion and to speak with students about their futures. The center, which is located right next to the cafeteria, is designed to be a more relaxed environment for students to get their questions answered about college and career choices.
On Tuesdays and Thursdays, this center is manned by counselors during our lunch block, which is from 10:00 to 12:45. And students can come in during that time. They have an hour of study time in their classes. So if they need to, they can come in and speak with counselors one-on-one to get information about applying and attending college, military information, or if they're looking at going into an apprenticeship program or looking at going into the world of work after high school.
It's helpful because senior year is stressful, especially with applying to colleges, it's stressful. So it's, it's helpful because our parents, most of the time, are at work. So we don't have time to do it with our parents at home a lot, all the time. So it's helpful.
So I just got an onsite decision for the University of Mary Washington. And I got accepted and offered a merit-based scholarship. So that was good news. I think it's awesome. I am a first-generation college student that my family has ever applied or been. So it was a really confusing process, but coming here and like just being surrounded with people that were all willing to help you all the time, it made it 10 times easier, easily. It was just, it was really nice to have that support. And any question you had, they were willing to answer.
Students at Calcott Elementary are experiencing reading in a more interactive way thanks to their media specialist who set up a storywalk outside the school. A storywalk encourages literacy and movement by taking pages of a book and placing them along a path for readers to follow. These enthusiastic students enjoyed the book Due Unto Otters by Lori Keller as they traveled around the school's grounds.
It's just another unique way to get the students be involved with reading and boost their communication skills and just simply enjoying it. They seem to be very engaged and motivated to move on to the next page, find out what happens in the story next. So the participation was excellent.
It was such a great experience, um, you know, especially after COVID and being virtual for a year. It's nice to get back to these kinds of activities. And the kids were so excited. They don't have to just be sitting on their desks. So I think that makes it more fun for them. Um, and there's a lot of buy-in with that because they feel like they're playing a game instead of doing a reading lesson.
Norfolk Public Schools, along with local pharmacies and the Virginia Department of Health, began vaccinating students between the ages of five and 11 in mid-November. Students who had permission from their parents were able to get safely vaccinated onsite at their own schools.
With these vaccine clinics, we're doing all of the schools that have five to 11-year-olds. Um, that is, I think, about 32 schools, um, the elementary schools and some of the schools that have, um, elementary and middle populations. It's important because we want to, um, get as many people vaccinated as possible. It helps us to lower the numbers, the transmission numbers. I mean, the more people that we have vaccinated, uh, the better it is for everybody.
We're really excited, particularly working with the Norfolk Public Schools and local pharmacies. It's really a community event to get these kids vaccinated. We want to reduce the number of barriers to get access to care, particularly these vaccines. So coming to, right to the students while they're here learning, give this opportunity. It's the easiest way to do it. The parents trust the schools. The students are in a comfortable environment. So the health department and our partners are coming in right where the kids are.
Love it. I really do love it. It makes it easier for, for me as a parent, because I work all day, than trying to make an appointment, go get the shots, and then having to mess everything up. So this makes it a lot easier.
Vaccine wasn't actually that bad. It was just a one-second trick, and then it was done. I thought it was going to take a lot of them that. I'm feeling pretty good. I just like it. It's, it's really good to get vaccinated.
Another year, another group of student athletes from Maury High School taking their talents to the next level. A signing day ceremony was held recently as eight student athletes revealed where they will play in college. Included in this bunch, a soccer player, two tennis players, and five members of the baseball team.
It's that final step to all the hard work that I've put in over the years. Um, I've always had dreams of playing college baseball, but when you really get to the point where you commit to it, it's, it's a grind and it's a lot of work. And I don't think, um, people who don't go through that really understand it. And to this day is, it, it, it's really important to us. It means a lot. And I'm very happy that I can finally see it, to fruition.
It was very special to me because to see my friends, family, and just the whole support of the school come out, I can cherish this moment forever.
I think it's just an important day to celebrate them because of all the hard work that they put in. Um, to be part of 3%, they get to go to the next level and compete is something that's special. And to be able to do it in front of their peers and their parents is important.
Yeah. Good job, athletes. Go into college on scholarships. That's what we've, you know.
Great news. Okay.
I was just going to say that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Okay, up next, we have our, um, school board clerk's report.
Yes, Madam Chair. The first recognitions go to our Maury High School athletes who excelled in state and regionally in sports. Congratulations to Maury High School Commodores Varsity Football Team for their efforts to clinch the Class V Regional Football Title. This past weekend, Maury vied for the state championship against Stonebridge and gave an outstanding performance and great sportsmanship. A job well done for an outstanding season. We recognize Coach Darien McCain, his assistant coaches, Mike Privet, Tevis Terrell, Kevin Knight, Demetrius Blue, uh, Darius Blunt, Chris Evans, George Harris, Kevin Mills, assistant coaches Warren Davis, Darryl Jones, Orion Hall, Bryce Parker, Carlos Martinez, Jordan Martin, and the 83 team members for their hard work and dedication this season, led by team captains Tyon Reed, Jaden Tarjet, and Shaquan Miles. Next, we have the Maury Varsity Girls Volleyball Team, who won the Region Class V Title with head coach Andrea Everett, who led 21 team members, along with team captains Catherine McCullough, Deondra Hood, Chloe Ventura, and Madeline Manzer, Manzer, to this coveted title. Congratulations to the Maury Varsity Boys Volleyball Team for also receiving the Region Class V Title with head coach Jim Limbaugh and assistant Shane Limbaugh, and team trainer Corinne Huck, who led 20 team members, along with the team captain Matthew Phillips, to victory. And we now, and we now, we will have the following state recognitions. Congratulations to Maury's Boys and Girls Cross-Country Teams for clinching the Class V State Championships. The Boys finished third in the regional meet. The team coach Brian Bennett led 10 team members to the state finals. And the Girls finished first in the regional meet, led by coach Brian Bennett, with 10 team members sharing in the state finals. Next, our middle school sports recognitions are as follows. Congratulations to Blair Middle School, who finished the season 7-0 and claimed the Middle School League Championship for the first time since 20, since 2009, with a victory over Lake Taylor School, an exciting game played by both teams. Jaden Avery was named and received the Cam Chancellor Award for the game as well. Head coach Darren Jones and assistant coach Kevin Mills led the 39 team members to the championship. Next, after tying Blair in the regular season 2-2 record to share the regular season championship title, congratulations to the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood Girls Soccer Team, who won the city championship tournament for the second time in a row. The 17-member team is led by coach Tamara Villanos Flores, who led the Eagles for both titles. And Madam Chair, this concludes our student recognitions for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. Could we get a round of applause for all our amazing student athletes? And the coaches, and all the parents who, um, go to pick up from practices and go to games. I know, knew that personally. So thank you, everyone. Okay, up next, we have our, well, before we go into our, uh, public hearing on our budget, I thought it'd be a good idea to just go over, um, the, uh, budget development process. So, Mr. Jenkins, Jenkins, please approach the lectern. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Uh, Dr. Martin, Vice Chairman, uh, Clanton, Dr. Birdsong, and members of the school board. Uh, I'll talk briefly about, uh, our budget process and just give some context to our, our, our budget. So just moving forward, um, one of the major items, uh, in developing our budget is enrollment trends. Uh, we receive a very large portion of our funding from the State of Virginia. And it's based on our, our, our membership or the number of students that are attending our schools. You see here on the graph, uh, our enrollment trends from 2011 to, uh, the current year, 2022. Uh, you can see on the red line at the, um, the top part of the graph, that is the, um, the membership at the, at September 30th, which is kind of a day that we measure against. We report that to the state each year. Uh, you can notice that, uh, membership has dropped, uh, quite a bit in the last couple of years. We attribute much of this drop to, um, the coronavirus. Uh, but you see that we have had a steady drop, decline from, um, 2011. And going back previous year's, uh, similar trend. The line that's just below that, the blue line, is the average daily membership for the year. Uh, and you can see our projection for fiscal '22 is actually above the, uh, membership that was at September 30th. So, um, I'm fairly certain we will not meet that target. Typically, we have a few hundred students less, uh, for the entire year on average than we have at the end of September. So this is a challenge that we're facing in the current budget, and we expect that to continue in the future. A summary of our general fund revenue. The general fund is the, is the fund that has most, uh, that you have the most, um, I guess discretion over. Uh, the funds don't have nearly as many strings. You can see here that our, our budget for last year, fiscal '21, was $337 million. Uh, it climbed, uh, this year, this is fiscal '22, to $354.87 million, which is an increase of 17.7, or 5 and 1/4 percent. Uh, this is, uh, was a healthy increase, uh, partially because the '21, um, with it, we saw big increases both in city revenue and, uh, in state revenues. Uh, you can see that most of our revenue is comprised of funds from the state, 212 million of the 355. And also, the city's regular appropriation, just under 130 million. The city also provides some funding through, uh, dedicated revenue for the school debt service. For the current year fiscal '22, uh, top priorities were teacher and staff pay and benefits, uh, additional resources for schools, school, uh, safety and security, technology and instructional supports, and making sure our facilities are attractive and, uh, conducive to teaching and learning. Some of our strategies, aligning the existing positions to address priorities, aligning our staff with the declining enrollment, and using federal recovery and capital funds to maintain operations and continuity of service. This gives you an idea of how we, uh, of how we spend our money, our budget. This is, again, the general fund, uh, 355 million. And you can see just under 3/4 of the budget is spent on instructional services. Other services included administration attendance and health, people transportation, operations and maintenance, uh, and a few others. And you can see those collectively are 27%. Another cut of the general fund divides the, the $355 million between employee pay and benefits, which is 85% of our budget, uh, and everything else, heating and cooling schools, repairing them, buying textbooks, materials, equipment, everything else comprises only 15% of the budget. So we are a people organization. Most of our budget has been people. This is a similar graph. Uh, this indicates our staffing, how many employees are in each group. You can see that 3/4, 76% of our positions, or 3,108 are in direct instructional services and support. The other 24% fall into the administration attendance and health, uh, and so forth that you see on the screen. We have a total of 4,111 positions in the general fund budget. And this, the general fund that excludes things like the grants funds and the capital funds and food service. Uh, this is our timeline. Uh, there were a couple of errors that I apologize for. I was pulling from the wrong sheet. So there are a couple of date corrections on this compared to what was posted onto the, um, onto the, the agenda earlier, last week. The school board is, uh, gathering input today, so we have citizens to speak. Um, Governor Northern is expected to release a budget towards the end of the week, uh, 16th, that the 16th would be tomorrow. Um, the administration will provide an update to you based on Governor, uh, Governor Northern's budget, um, recommendations at your next work session on January 12th. Uh, Dr. Birdsong will re-release a proposed budget to you on March the 2nd. Uh, that would be followed by a public hearing to gain, uh, additional input from, uh, our citizens on the 16th of March. And you, uh, excuse me, on the 9th of March, I beg your pardon. Um, the school board is scheduled to adopt the budget on the 16th of March. Uh, and it must be by statute sent to the Norfolk City Council by the first day of April. During May, we expect that, um, the public, the, uh, City of Norfolk City Council will hold public hearings and will, uh, vote on a budget, which, which may be different, lower or higher than the, the one that you propose. With that, Madam Chair, I turn it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Doctor Martin?
Yes, yes, Mr. Jordan.
Yeah, I have a question to ask, a question on the presentation.
Sure. Mr. Jenkins, can you please get back up to lectern? Go ahead.
Mr. Jenkins, you were mentioning that there were errors on the, on the timeline. And I had noted that the presentation that we received on Friday was different than what you're presenting tonight. On the original, there was a, uh, acknowledgement of, uh, the board identifying budget priorities. I see that was removed. And I really didn't, don't see anything in here that speaks to the board engagement in the, in the process. Can you explain why the budget priorities piece from the, was, was removed and, yeah, if you could start there?
Mr. Jordan, I'd, I'd like to tackle that question, if that's okay.
Okay.
Um, I, I recall that as the board has been in discussion, basically last year, about the budget, um, there was a desire for me, as the superintendent, to bring forth my recommendations to you. Um, there were comments about, um, perhaps that the board should not be leading the process, but the superintendent should. But definitely, the school board, of course, certainly, it would be, it's going to be your budget, so your priorities are going to be reflected in that. But that did, did not necessarily need to be a part of the timeline because that was going to be ongoing throughout the process.
Thank, thank you for that. I, I'm concerned about it largely. I think the discussion that we were having last year was based upon that we agreed as a board to have the priorities aligned with our, uh, the board accountability plan and the priorities that we agreed to as a board. And then over the past year, as we were doing our governance training, that part of the expectation was that, uh, some of the outcomes as a result of that training would help to determine our budget priorities. And I just think that, um, considering all of the, uh, additional funds that we've had, the discussions that we have had during the, uh, budget throughout the year, that the school board, doing its responsibilities of trying to provide some set of framework or priorities for the administration's recommendations, I still think that's important. And if we, if we aren't going to do that, and that's, and that's the will of the board, I support that. But I'm just saying that when I received the presentation on Friday, I was pleased to see that it was being acknowledged that the school board would be involved in setting some set of expectations. Normally, this budget hearing gives the board an opportunity to hear from the public for the public to then share what the public believes the board and the school system ought to be prioritizing. And then that then allows us to communicate with the administration based upon the feedback that we've heard from the public. And so my feeling is that we should build back into the timeline, the board being clear on what its priorities and expectations are, and that the, so that we set the what. And then the superintendent in the budget recommendation would say how, uh, the administration intends to use the resources available to carry out the what that the board, the board has established.
I just want to speak to that because we are communicating to the superintendent what our priorities are through our goals and guardrails, which, um, we will continue to work on. She's been involved in, in that discussion for the past six months. So she's, she's been, we, we very clearly told her what our priorities are.
Well, my, my response to that is we, we, we've never completed the goals and guardrail process, and we didn't vote on goals and guardrails. So in order for the board to be clear on what it's communicating, to me, it's important for the board to, uh, through our action, through our collective action, to, if it's going to be goals and guardrails, if it's going to be the, the existing school board accountability plan, whatever it is, that the board be clear so that there's not confusion. I, as one board member, am very familiar with the work that we've done on the goals and guardrails, but also know we did not vote on them and finalize them. So I don't know to what extent it's the will of the board to have the drafts that we have, set that framework, or the existing goals and guard, the existing goals and priorities that we established through the school board accountability plan that we did vote on and approve. That was the basis for my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Um, Mr. Clanton?
Thank you.
Sorry, it's hard for me to see.
Yeah, it's kind of weird back around. Uh, thank you, Dr. Martin. Um, and I appreciate my colleague bringing that up. Um, but I do want to make sure that everyone's aware that even though we have been going through this process of developing goals and guardrails, that there is a plan, an accountability plan that the board did approve back in 2019, that gives a clear direction as to what we have set as a collective. Though we're working to improve that as we're moving through the strategic planning process. And goal one is improve student academic achievement and outcomes. Goal two is ensure safe, caring, and healthy learning environments. And goal three is strengthen family and community stakeholder engagement. Um, so that document is present. It's on our, um, school board, um, site. Um, and that is a clear plan that the board as a collective has voted on. Yes, we are going through the process of identifying new goals and guardrails as we're also identifying a new strategic plan for the entire district. But there is a clear direction, um, for the superintendent to be able to work from, from the framework, from the framework, as well as being able to bring back those proposals as we also listen to the voices of the community and those individuals who are here through the process so that we can ensure that when we receive the draft, that we can ensure that it's in alignment with the things for which we've already established. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Bassin, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I think, uh, did I hear, Mr. Jordan, you wanted to respond?
Yes.
Okay.
I was just, just going to simply say that I think my point is being made. So I raised the question. Uh, Dr. Martin gave one response. Mr. Clanton gave another response. And that just, that just, uh, reinforces that I think it's important that as a board, we're just clear, uh, to the superintendent. So through this process, um, we can just have a good and productive process. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Bessine, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. I too appreciate the comments that have been made so far. I support Mr. Jordan's request. I too believe that the budget, I mean, sorry, the School Board should be able to provide their, the priorities, not only indicated in the Accountability Plan, but also with the data that we have been reviewing and monitoring over the past year. So with that, I, I support and believe wholeheartedly that the Board should have that opportunity to express our priorities.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bessine. I just want to say that Dr. Birdsong has been doing an excellent job leading our district since we hired her, and she is very knowledgeable of the priorities that are needed in our district. And, and again, we have communicated those to her as a Board. I'm just, I want to get away from the practice, which we eradicated last year for this very reason, is that we had individuals giving direction and, in priorities, and we weren't giving direction as a full Board, which we've moved away from. And I really don't, this is, you know, my opinion, I just don't see the need to go back to that. I think that's poor governance. And so what I, what I'm, what I would favor is that we continue to establish our Goals and Guardrails, to adopt them, and to move forward instead of backward. Okay? All right, thank you. All right, up next, we have the budget, Public Budget Hearing. Ms. Tanner, will you please read the format for the public, Public Budget Hearing?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have six speakers for tonight's public hearing on the FY 2023 budget. Speakers have three minutes to provide public comments. A timer will alarm to signal the conclusion of your remarks. Board members do not respond to public comments during this time. Madam Chair, our first speaker for today is Halima Akar, followed by Hermenia Smith-Jolly. And you may come down to the microphone here to provide your public comments.
Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Okay. Good evening, Norfolk Public School Board Members. My name is Halima Akar. Sorry, I didn't know this mouse is connected to that. I reside at 6480 Crescent Way, Apartment 103. My six-year-old son here, Azrael Budd, attends Norview Elementary School, and he has autism. I am a member of the Norfolk Public Schools Special Education Advisory Committee. I first wanted to say thank you for all of the hard work and hard decisions that you all must face every day for our students and our staff, and I appreciate you. We appreciate you. I did want to speak before you tonight, as you all work hard to come up with your budget plans for the upcoming year about ensuring that the needs of special needs children are included with those plans. Excuse me, trying to make sure he doesn't run. I do want to ensure the concerns that I have about the current capacity of Norfolk Public Schools, meeting the needs of students like my son are addressed, especially in recently hearing about the staffing shortages in learning support and specifically special education. My son, as I said, stated, he attends Norview Elementary School. He had a teacher the first week of school, and then we haven't seen her ever since, and he hasn't had a teacher ever since. And he's now in January moving to Richard Bowling, so that he can have a, a teacher, which I appreciate. But with any child with autism transition and that structure, it's a new school environment that's hard, and I am very concerned. I would like to encourage you, Azrael's going to provide it to Ms. Tanner, to read thoroughly through the 2021 Special Education Advisory Committee Annual Report to the School Board. It is provided to you by our co-chair, Mr. Vashti Washington and Ms. Vicki Greco, and also invite you to attend one of our Special Education Advisory Committee meetings. And I do thank you so much for your time and your dedication, but mostly your consideration of special education students in your budget planning. So Azrael's going to come bring you the annual report, if, if we're allowed, because they're mine.
You can give the annual report to our clerk, Ms. Tanner. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for, thank you for coming and sharing.
Thank you.
Next, we have Hermenia Smith-Jolly, followed by Barrett Hicks.
Good evening. Good evening. I hope everyone can hear me. I'm a former teacher at Southside STEM Academy, and I'm here tonight because I want to inform the Board and everyone concerned about the school. First of all, when we first moved into our school, we did not have all of the things that we were promised to have in the school, especially devices. I remember doing benchmark evals, evaluations after each quarter, and we would have to take carts from one room to the other, juggle them around the hallway to get them into other classes, so that our kids could take tests. This is a STEM school, this is Norfolk Public Schools STEM school. We do not have, and I can speak as we, because even though I'm a retired teacher, I am still part of that school, and I love it dearly. You have to do better. Someone has to do better. That is getting these devices into the school. By the time we would have the devices brought to our rooms, the school, the children were just over it, period. And you know how kids can get when they don't have what they need. And of course, do you expect them to do well? No, you don't. Okay? So that hasn't changed, and I know that for a fact, because I get phone calls from my teachers. They're my teachers, because we work closely together. A lot of them are not there, but still those that are there, we talk. We still don't have what we need. I'm asking each Board Member to go to the school, pay a visit, ask the students, do you have what you need? When kids don't get what they need, guess what? They act up. When kids don't learn, they act up, and this is what's going on. We have to come up with a plan to get back to a village. Each one of you on the Board, you're part of that village. I take ownership to Southside STEM. It's part of me, and I would hope and pray that it would become part of you. And please try to help these students, because you have doctors, you have lawyers, you have teachers, they've told me, you know? And you have kids who really want to be somebody. But if you don't have what you need, you're going to act up, and you know that. We're all human. And I'm saying to you now, please, we have to become a village. I hate to bring this up, but I was part of a school in Virginia Beach where we turned it around, just like Southside. It became the tri-campus, if anybody knows that. We made it work. This Board and the village, the whole village, we got to make this work. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Barrett Hicks, followed by Rhoda Young.
Okay, I just want to take a minute to also remind everyone that this portion of the public hearing is on the budget, and we will be hearing on other topics at, separate from this, so following this agenda item. Go ahead, Mr. Hicks.
Well, good evening. I'm Barrett Hicks. I'm the Executive Director for the Concerned Citizens Association, Toward Connection. I, I want to speak directly into the Board priorities that Mr. Jordan talked about. I, as a citizen, would love to hear what the Board priorities are from each and every one of the, the Board Members, in that sense. That, that's important to us. We need to, need to hear that as, as citizens. I too, like Ms. Hermenia, question the situations over at Southside STEM and think that you guys need to make sure you're putting money towards those devices as well. I mean, I came to the last School Board meeting, we spoke to that as well, that we have kindergarten, the whole kindergarten class without devices, first grade classes with 50 percent of the classes of the students without them as well. Come on, these budget items, and we know that Mr. Scott, Congressman Scott, told us that the schools got more money than they have ever had over this period. Come on, folks, it's time to do the work that's needed for these children. These children need the funding, and the funding needs to go to the one, the most needed first, to bring them to, bring them forward. We're in a situation where you guys gave an assessment last week in reference to the PAL scores. PAL scores was down like, like I've never seen them before. And is that because of the fact of the budget items, or money's not there? Or is it because of the lack of instruction? What, what is really going on? I mean, come on, guys, we, we know that each and every one of these seats are up in the coming year, and I can tell you for sure, I'll be out there trying to make sure that we either get new people, or you guys are going to do your jobs. So when we come back to talking about this budget again, we need to include these community organizations. We got groups over in the Berkeley community that, that's running bans when our schools don't have those capabilities. We need to partner with those groups. We need to make sure that we have, we have these mentorship programs that, like football or basketball, with Coach Yogi, who has been a long time guy within the Norfolk Public School Systems, helping as, with the Norfolk Titans, with Glenn Yearlin over there, to where we combine some programs. But we got, need to do it with the public as well. Those were, were these funding that's coming down, we need to make sure that we're using it properly for these children. What we've also seen is the fact that we brought to the attention that because of their lack of the additional adult voice and the help and support with funding, we're having these fights that's going on at Southside STEM since school opened. We've got to take the funding and make sure it's getting to where it needs to go. It cannot just come in, and then we send it to somewhere else. We've seen that happen. Again, I always will come back to Southside STEM versus ADL. We saw that turnaround, so how about some best practices in that sense with this money? Thank you.
Next, we have Rhoda Young, followed by Nicole Anthony and Danielle Clark.
My name is Aminah Matheny-Willard. I'm a resident of Norfolk, and I am deeply, deeply concerned about the outbreaks of fighting in the Norfolk Public Schools. What has been more concerning is the schools' efforts to attempt to keep these fights out of the public eye. These fights need to be addressed, and our children deserve better. Right now, I'm focusing on preparing to put a national spotlight on the city of Norfolk for a variety of reasons, and the school fights will definitely be a focus. Mental health counselors need to be included in the school's budget, and I'm not going to take the rest of the time. Rhoda asked me to speak on her behalf.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Nicole Anthony. I am an Assistant Professor of Special Education at Fayetteville State University. I'm also an autism advocate, but more importantly, I'm the mother of three boys, two of which are diagnosed with autism. My son Gabriel is a student at Maury High School. And also, I am a CAC member, but a mother first. So Ms. Appher delivered letters to all of you in reference to our annual report, and I wanted to highlight some numbers as you read over the report. I, I hope you read it, because we took great care to write it. As you think about the budget, I want you to really think about the focus. I'm a data person. I always say data don't lie, but interpretations vary. The data here don't lie. Only 38 percent of our students with disabilities are proficient readers, according to the STAR data. Less than 50 percent of students with disabilities are proficient in the areas of math. In-school suspension, 77.6 percent of the in-school suspensions were black students. Black students, 81 percent of all suspended for students with IEPs. Long-term suspensions for the year 2019-2020, black students were 87.1 percent of long-term suspensions. I could go on, but as you can see here, we have a trend in the data. Our black students, our black students with disabilities, they're in trouble. We need a concentrated, data-driven effort to improve the literacy and math skills of students with disabilities. And now, I'm going to take off my CAC hat and stand in the role of a mother, a black mother of children. When I looked at the data and reviewed it, I was dismayed, disappointed, disheartened, and downright disgusted. Every day that all of you sit up here and make decisions about what's happening within Norfolk Public Schools, and we watch these fly-reed videos, I wonder, do you think about our students who are truly suffering? Our students who are truly in need? Do you? Every day that you say that, I want to present this front for Norfolk Public Schools, all of these children graduating, which is great, do you think how many students with disabilities are graduating with a general diploma? Less than 50 percent. And that's a problem. Every day that you do not make students with disabilities, especially black students with disabilities, a focus, you're saying to parents that you don't care. And that's a problem. Thank you.
Danielle Clark.
My name is Danielle Clark. My daughter is Azariah Slater. She attends Lake Taylor High School. I feel like your budget should go towards security, as a lot of fights have broken out, and there's a lot of bullying going on. My daughter suffers from social anxiety. She barely talks, so she's not going to defend herself. My job as her mother is to be her first line of defense. I am unable to do that with your school. I put her in your care the moment she steps on the school bus. Nothing happens when the bullies are attacking her. I have four protective orders. Four. And the students that I have the protective orders on are still violating that protective order. Me being a parent and an advocate for bullying, I don't want to put someone's adulthood, them starting their life and their career at jeopardy. Other parents should take accountability for their child, as well as the school. You all have failed a lot of students and a lot of parents. You don't know what goes on. You don't give them lockers. They're walking around with book bags, coats, and we don't know what they have. I've had a young man walk up to her and tell her that she's going to be the last person that he ever sees in her life. And though he's transgender, he's still a man, and it shouldn't be allowed. I don't know the proper protocol or what classes that Administration needs to take in your school system, but in no way, shape, or form should my daughter write a statement, and that individual know that she was the one who wrote the statement, and be able to attack her. The budget needs to go towards security. Classes for Administration, and something needs to be done. And I'm speaking on her behalf as well as others, because there's a lot of parents who won't come here and speak up, because nothing is being done. So I'm asking you to put the funding towards security, towards the School Board for our children, because their safety matters just like yours.
Madam Chair, this concludes our speeches for this evening's public hearing on the budget.
I'm sorry, Ms. Tanner, I, I couldn't hear you. Ms. Tanner? Are there, is there another speaker for the budget? I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said this concludes our speeches for tonight's public hearing that signed up before 7:00 PM.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you for the wonderful copping. I encourage that, but I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Okay, we'll move on to the next section, which is Citizens Comments on Agenda and Non-Agenda Item. And also, we have a first reading of Policy G C B D Z, Employee Leave. Ms. Tanner, please call the first person up.
Madam Chair, for tonight's public comments, speakers have three minutes to provide public comments. A timer will alarm to signal the conclusion of your remarks. Madam Chair, our first speaker for today for agenda items only or non-agenda items is Tiffany Fagan, or Fegan, followed by Corbin Brown. followed by Corbin Brown.
Good evening, Norfolk School Board members, Superintendent Dr. Burdson and fellow administration. My name is Tiffany Fagan. I am the PTA president at Gint School. But I am here tonight as a representative of the Norfolk Council PTA to represent all Norfolk Public Schools. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I thank the Gint School PTA Board, Nicole Drummond, Kathy Martinez, and Michelle Sims of TWP for your consistent support and partnership. I also want to thank Norfolk Council PTA Board and Vicky Greco, Patrice Jones, and Norfolk PTA President Sharice Newsome for your guidance and partnership in advocating this particular challenge. What is the challenge that you may ask? It is water. This challenge is the one thing that does not matter where you live, what school you go to, nor what color you are, or how much you make. As NPS planned for our students to return, safety measures were put in place to help mitigate the COVID-19 virus. One of the needed changes was that all water fountains were shut down within the schools, preventing our children to have consistent access to clean drinking water. Back in August, it was said that students should bring their own water bottles. That may work, may have worked for some, but even my own kids struggle having enough water throughout the day. From my understanding, NPS is now acting to resolve this challenge and we thank you. I do want to encourage all of you that we need open and honest communication so we can work together to be able to come up with immediate and long-term solutions. I encourage that you start to be proactive instead of reactive to the different challenges that come our way. I encourage that we look at ourselves as trendsetters instead of waiting for other districts to come up with a solution. And we are Norfolk, Virginia, and our kids deserve for us to be just as innovative as we expect them to be. Thank you to all, to the one teacher at J Cox that broke down the struggle of having to afford water for her class. Thank you to all the teachers and staff for your support of our children financially, emotionally, educationally, and mentally. We see you and we hear you. Thank you to Gint, to the Gint custodians, teachers and staff that encouraged me to keep pushing for all of our kids to have access to clean drinking water freely and consistently and equitably in our city. Thank you and end this together.
Next we have Corbin Brown, followed by Colette Keith.
How you doing? My name is Corbin Brown. I'm the father of four girls. They all attend Norfolk Public Schools. I'm a graduate of Norview High School, Air Force veteran, also a business owner in Norfolk, I have a store in General Shopping Center. So here, today I'm here to represent Care More Community Group, my nonprofit. We have played, we have created a solution to help underserved, underserved youth channel their energy into discovering their purpose, value, and resiliency. Finding your purpose through art is an artistic development program that focuses on troubled youth, seeking to help them to unlock their true potential with the help of art and mentorship. With our course, it is an interactive hybrid course, meaning it is online and in person. We have taken, we have took action to implement this course, this course next year in our, in our store in General Shopping Center. But we also wanna be able to incorporate this into the school system. Being that I, like I said, I was a graduate of Norview and I was, I was a resident of Norfolk my, my whole life, basically. Um, I had a mentor when I grew up, so I knew the benefits of it. Um, I grew up in a, around an environment, the same environment that mostly all my friends did. Me going to the military and coming back home, I seen the difference of how I was able to perceive the world and everything around me. Um, so I knew that the, the benefits of having a mentorship program. With this program, it is finding purpose through art because art, it helps you unlock the inner you. It helps you understand what your true purpose is sometimes and understand what you really even care about. So it helps you even find direction of where to go. So what we are, what we are trying to do is build relationships as well. Like, like, um, the young lady spoke about, um, building the village. We have to have a village between the school system and, and us. It has to be somewhere where we work together. You all done your, you all part, but it's for us to be able to implement what we have as well. So I believe this course is definitely needed. Uh, we aren't here to just complain. We're here to be the solution. So that's what we're here for. Care More Community Group is what I stand for. Thank you.
Colette Keith, followed by Quentin Howard.
Good afternoon. My name is Colette Keith. I'm a special education teacher at Stell McAdemy with the middle school students. I want to know what's the plan for the special education teachers when our school is short-staffed? I realize that it's no, it's not our fault of the administrator. They are doing their best that they can do as well going above and beyond. However, I feel that we need to come up with a plan as quickly as possible. If we do, do not have teachers in the core subjects, what is the plan? By law, we must service our students, but there are needs to be, um, teachers in the classroom. Special education teachers have to use little salary that they have to purchase rewards for the students as incentives for build small resources and equipments that requires, um, for the students. Teachers are also not safe at the, on the job and at the job, um, for the student behaviors. And there is no support rendered to the teachers because we have responsibilities and no rights as teachers. With all the teachers have endured this year thus far, um, all teachers require bonuses. The workload is extremely heavy. A lot of paperwork is always required, which takes away from instruction. Teachers are forced to do work at home, which affects the family life as well. Teachers are enduring a lot mentally this school year. A lot of teachers are experiencing a lot of health issues due to behavior problems displayed by the students. Some teachers are scared to leave the building every day in fear for their lives because students are making threats. Teachers should be the highest paid workers, especially this school year. Teachers are not giving breaks to use bathrooms when they are stuck with covering classes. Also lunch breaks and planning blocks are taken when we have to cover classes. As soon as we enter the building, bags in hand, we are being pulled to cover classes on lunch breaks. We have, um, students, so we are not getting our thirty minutes lunch breaks. Is there something we can do to ease the pressure off of special education, um, teachers? Thank you.
We have Quentin Howard, followed by Vicky Greco.
Good evening. My name is, uh, Quentin Howard. Good evening, Dr. Burdson and all school board members. Uh, I'm new to Norfolk, now, public schools, but not to the education field. So I've been told to always start out with something positive before you get to the negative. Uh, so my positive is the, uh, school workers and coworkers. We're very positive and try to keep each other motivated on a daily basis. I've noticed various members, uh, from administration have been at the school trying to assist and make things easier and better, so looking into the problems so that they can better assist us, assist, assist us as we move forward. Uh, I'm also a learning support teacher like, uh, Ms. Keith who just spoke. So some of the issues that, uh, I would like to bring to the board's attention is, uh, we do not have powers to assist us with, uh, our daily activities. So if we're trying to provide services to this group of students, nobody's taking that on the, these students so that we can collect all of that. Uh, the caseloads are astronomical. I've never been at a school where I've had eighteen-plus students on my caseload. I don't feel as a, a learning support teacher that, um, I'm not an inclusive teacher, so I'm only in there to work with my kids and not in a true inclusive setting. My previous, uh, school district, if there was an English teacher and a sped teacher, they were assigned to that class and worked with them all day. I feel like I'm just popping in and out and trying to service my kids. So, um, I have run across some general ed teachers who are reluctant to participate in IEPs, SECs, and triennial meetings. And I can't do my job without a general education teacher in those meetings when I talk to the parents. So some importance should be placed on that. There have been issues where my students, like one of the, uh, earlier speakers said, we're not kept in a loop when our students are getting disciplinary actions. So my students suspended, I'm finding out from them as they're leaving the school that there was a fight when I worked with them early in the day, but not later in the day. So that's something that needs to be looked at where everyone's in a loop, especially if that student has an IEP. Um, and, um, also being made to cover classes for general education teachers because if they're out, I'm sure they're putting in for a substitute and there is no substitute. So we can't always split the class up and go this way or that way with it. And, um, I don't know what the rules or the, the guidance from the school board is on substitutes, but that's something that needs to improve. That's all I have and thank you for your time.
Vicky Greco, followed by Mary Brown.
Good evening, Dr. Martin and school board members, Student Representative Ms. Johnson and Superintendent Dr. Burdson, executive leaders and frontline and back office staff, our students and teachers, NPS parents and school community members, all of us who are fellow students of the class of COVID-19 and the lessons our pandemic experience have given us and are still giving us. If only we heed them. My name is Vicky Manugo Greco. Some of you might already know that I'm a lifelong learner and LT Titan thanks to NPS. My husband and I are parents of two NPS grads and two, and a tenth grader who is desperate to graduate so he can study and read ancient history to his heart's content. I'm a persistent PTA member. Over the last sixteen years, our family has given our time and paid our dues to six different PTAs in Norfolk. And this year I'm advocacy chair for the Norfolk Council PTAs. I'm a former speech pathologist for the division and current volunteer on the special education and gifted education advisory committees, as well as the facilities steering educational planning committee. I, just like a gracious plenty of the members of our NPS community, are all in for strengthening and improving our city's schools so all children succeed. Let me express my deepest appreciation and great admiration for our city's young learners, our schoolchildren, who are constantly asked to make sense of a world that doesn't always make sense, to find meaning and purpose in what they learn in their classrooms. And so of course I'd like to thank the teachers and staff who teach and reach our children each day and help build their understanding and knowledge while helping them make sense of this world and help find positive places where they belong and grow and learn. In this world, a world that demands now more than ever, that we boldly advocate not only for all of our children's basic needs, needs like a high-quality education for every student is provided for in our state constitution, or readily accessible drinking water whenever they need it at school, but for us to do so much better for them, by them, in spite of our daily challenges. If not now, then when? I graduated from Lake Taylor in June nineteen eighty-five, just before elementary school busing ended in the fall of eighty-six, which led our city down the path of resegregating some of our schools along racial and socioeconomic lines. I became an NPS parent in the Great Recession, which resulted in the historic loss of school funding and resources and educator positions. We must now take the human and funding resources our community affords us and optimize and leverage and enlist and keep and grow and monitor all these resources with innovation and boldness because if not now, when? Thank you.
Mary Brown, followed by Jacqueline Scott.
Good evening, school board. Uh, my name is Mary Brown and I am a third grade teacher at Tanis Creek Elementary School. I have been a Norfolk employee for almost thirty years. I've also, I'm also the mother of two children who went through Norfolk and, and I also was a graduate of Norfolk. I know one of Norfolk's goals is how to keep and attract new teachers. Well, there are a myriad of reasons, as we know, that teachers are leaving the district and leaving the profession in general. But as I, but I believe, talking to my coworkers, that one of the main reasons in my building that teachers have left and they plan to leave at the end of this year is mainly student negative behavior. This behavior is, is, we're in dire need of something. The behavior is truly out of control. We know that it is a residual effect of the pandemic. However, we saw it coming prior to the pandemic and it has only gotten worse. These children are trouble, but more than anything, they are troubled. And we owe it to them to offer them something. I'm the mother of Corbin Brown, who has this nonprofit organization. We talk often about things that we can do for the community. My son works with kids with Norview Middle School, I mean, Norview Recreation Center. He has, he gives, um, out school supplies. He, um, has, uh, Halloween activities. He's always been a part of the community. I'm a, a part of this community. We live in Norview and I come home and I talk about these things. But I don't talk about the problems because I wanna leave. I'm not gonna leave Norfolk. I'm on my way out as a retired, but I'm not leaving Norfolk. But something has to be done. These children deserve better. My, one of the teachers said, no one's gonna be in our building to teach these children. They're gonna be in the cafeteria with six people watching them. That is terrible. It is terrible. Every day someone's fighting in my classroom, every day. And I am a veteran teacher and by all standards, I'm an effective teacher. My SOL score is proving if that's what you all are going by. Um, but even in those situations, I cannot, I don't have what it takes to deal with these kids. I really do not have it. Schools have, um, churches coming in. We have the TDD counseling, but these kids don't relate to them. This, it doesn't, it doesn't feel like they have the purpose. They're not, they're trying, they are trying. Everyone is trying, but I think we need to find new and innovative ways to reach these children because they do matter. They matter. And we talk about the problems that, that teachers face. I'm tired like everybody else, but I got into this profession because I love children and I, I wanna see them succeed, just like everybody else. So we have to find ways, we gotta look outside the box, find ways that we can make a difference and, and, and serve our kids because all of them need to be served, even the ones who cause the problem. Thank you.
Next we have Jacqueline Scott, followed by, I believe, Crystal Lily. If I mispronounced your name, please correct me when you come to the mic. Thank you.
Good evening. This is a letter I'm reading to the board and to the superintendent of schools. And it's a letter that was authored, uh, through the Norfolk branch of the NAACP. Dear Dr. Burdson, Dr. Martin, and members of the school board, on behalf of the Norfolk branch, NAACP, we want to state our concerns about the lack of transparency from Norfolk Public Schools to communicate how funding under the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund, including the American Rescue Plan, ESSER, program will be used in response to the impact of the coronavirus disease twenty nineteen pandemic on students in pre-K through twelve. The U.S. Department of Education guidance regarding ESSER funds states a local education agency, Norfolk Public Schools, must engage in meaningful consultation with stakeholders, including civil rights organizations. As a civil rights organization, we are obliged to weigh in on events that severely affect students, specifically from black and brown communities. We are aware of the national concerns of the academic impact of lost instructional times, as has been witnessed, as well as the need for qualified teachers in the classroom, as been attested to. There has been no meaningful consultation with the Norfolk branch, NAACP, related to ESSER or any other relief funds allocated to Norfolk Public Schools. Additionally, we find Norfolk Public Schools' use of online surveys as a primary means of citizen input as a sign of a lack of understanding how digital inequity and online learning has impacted African-American families and students. We are calling upon Norfolk Public Schools to halt any distribution or future use of the relief funds until meaningful consultation takes place with the NAACP Norfolk branch. Moreover, NPS must be able to demonstrate that collaboration with black and brown stakeholders will take place. The Norfolk Public Schools APR, ESSER plans should be made clear and apparent to all students, parents, and community immediately, especially, I'm sorry, African-American and other stakeholders of color. We intend to take any action that we deem appropriate to ensure that NPS will allocate these ARPA funds away from these ARPA funds away from schools serving larger proportions of historically underserved groups of students. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. I'm a parent of Norfolk Public Schools, Dr. Birdsong and staff. My issue is the bullying in the school system. I cannot put the blame on the school system, not all of it, because it starts at home. But the bullying and the fighting and the kids jumping each other is getting out of hand. I'm going to piggyback on what Ms. Brown said and what Ms. Queen said. My son go to Norview Middle. I pick him up and bring him home. He's in Walking District. Every day, you seeing somebody get jumped on, about three and four kids. It has to stop, but I think it's time that the parent is held accountable for what their kids are doing. Otherwise, the bully is going to continue. The kid's going to be fighting, destroying property. It, it really has to stop. The kids in school fighting, you call Norfolk, it took them 45 minutes to get to Norview Greck Center, and two police calls was at Norview Middle. You've got parents that don't want their kids to walk home. Something has to be done with the school system and the bullying. I don't want it to be too late when Norfolk is on the school, on the news, for some child getting killed at school of being bullied. Or better yet, you got a parent coming up to the school that won't fight kids, that want to get in kids' face because they didn't have enough. You have parents that's calling, Norfolk hits wild boxing where I work at, to get their school, their kids in there so their kids could defend theirself. It shouldn't be that. Ms. Birdsong, I've been knowing you since you was at Azalea Middle. You've always been a fair person, reasonable and understanding. I've always respected you. But something has to be done about this bullying. Give our kids a fair chance. There's no perfect school system, there's no perfect school board, but give the kids a fair chance to get a fair education. Thank y'all.
Madam Chair, this concludes our speakers for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. Um, I-
See you at one, but-
Go ahead, Mr. Hicks, go ahead.
She says she signed up for both as well. I'm just, we were told that we could do both. Again, good evening. I'm Barrett Hicks, um, Executive Director for the Concerned Citizens Association. I want to say it was a blessing to see those kids from Blair. I would have loved to have seen them in the building because they did a great job. Say kudos to the families and the teachers that have been able to make it through this pandemic. Stay afloat. Special needs care is much needed. As you guys know, we launched a campaign to, for Child Find earlier last year. We need more research as to find out what's going on. Where are these children? And where are the children that left Tower of the Gardens and whatnot? It seems to be that there's an overflow at South Side STEM that could be a part of the problem right now. We need to know this, folks. It's, it's your jobs. I want to say thank you to the, to the teachers that have done the job the best, to the best of their abilities. I mean, really, to the best of their abilities, having to walk into classrooms and not having the tools for success. That, that's unheard of in a school system to be able to walk in and then you have to put your money out to make it happen when we have more money than we've ever had. No teacher should have to walk into that situation. And just like the, the special needs teacher that came up, more teachers must be willing to do that. Come to the mic to tell what they do not have in their classrooms. It, it must happen, must take place, and surely we will lead that cause to get behind you if you're willing to do that. I'm a little taken aback that we don't have more families here tonight, but in reference to the, the fights that have gone on at South Side STEM since the school opened this year, with the principal telling me and other teachers that saying that they are not allowed to share that information with the parents and the community. You guys not realize that when these kids are fighting in school, these kids walk back into the community and those fights continue. The parents must know. And whoever's telling them that they should not do this, who should not share this, needs to be fired. We talked about education and actually coming into the communities when this pandemic first started. We offered what we call pop-ups. We still offer that to you. We want the pop-ups to come back into the community, educational pop-ups, to where we go into the community and teach these children how to use these Chromebooks or Apple devices and making sure that the teachers have them and can use them. Come on, folks. These undeserved children and those scores that we see. It's time to go to work. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, for clarification, uh, Mr. Hicks has public hearing and new business, and Rhoda Young has public hearing and new business, but the individual who spoke for Rhoda Young, I didn't catch your name, if they're still here. So are you speaking on behalf of Rhoda Young again?
I'm not. I'm not, but my name is Amina, so it's A-M-I-N-A, and my last name is Matheny Willard, M-A-T-H-E-N-Y hyphen Willard, W-I-L-L-A-R-D, and I'm a resident of Norfolk. I'm also an attorney, and I have a business, and my law firm is in Norfolk.
And Hermenia Smith Jolly has parents' concerns and funding. So if this is the time you want to speak?
Good.
Yes.
Um, I want to commend the young lady that came up from South Side STEM, the teacher. Um, I'm no longer there, but I'm sure if this was going on, I would be before you anyway because the students that are there now, I have even asked the teachers who have called me quite often to say to me, these students aren't ours, most of them, okay? I stayed there at the school. I taught for 10 years. I will say this to you, we have never had what's going on there now. I think it's appalling. I think that it's embarrassing, not embarrassment, not just for the school, but I think for the Board and for the City of Norfolk, and we have got to get together to put an end to this bulliness and children putting hands on teachers. You didn't know that, did you? Okay, well, that happens. But I will tell you this, when I taught in Virginia Beach, there was a parent who threatened my life, and my principal had her arrested on her job. That's what happened, okay? As long as a student and a parent know that they can get away with this, they're going to continue to do this. Our security person, kids jumped him, six foot tall man, jumped him in the school. I don't know if it was reported. All I know, teachers are afraid and parents are afraid that if they speak out, no one is here with me this evening, but they didn't want to come because guess what? They don't want any retaliation. I don't think that we're that kind of school district who's going to retaliate on anyone, but this is how they're feeling. I'm saying that we need to get together as a village, get a committee going, and come down to the table and talk this out because it's not going to get any better. It's going to be worse, and I think everyone here has just about said that. I don't want to see anything happen really bad where it's going to be on the national news. We need to put an end to this now, and all it takes is for people to sit and talk, not to be yelling at each other, but to sit and talk about what needs to be done. And I just pray that this takes place because these kids are losing, and they're probably mad because guess what? There was no plan in place to bring these kids back together and to really uh help them where they were lost during the pandemic. Everybody lost all over the United States. So we have to come up with a plan. How are we going to pull this community back and they can trust all of us and we can work together? And how can we get the children back on, back where they should be? Because I'm saying to you, they want to be there, but when you have bullying classes, they, no, a teacher can't teach and students can't learn.
Madam Chair, at this moment, this concludes our speakers for this evening.
All right. I just want to say, community engagement is something that we talk about quite a bit and also exercise, and public hearings are just one way that we are able to connect with the community, and I really appreciate all of the groups coming out and sharing with us this evening and your involvement, involvement with our children, and really look forward. I know many groups, especially like the, um, the Norfolk Council PTAs and others, we work with you on a regular basis, but I'm so excited for the groups that have come out tonight that don't normally come out, and we really appreciate your feedback, so thank you again. All right, up next, we have our consent agenda, and um, I just want to note before we have a motion to adopt it, um, please note that the personnel report was moved to 5.01 under the decision discussion um, agenda at the request of Mr. Jordan. Okay? So can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Ms. Tanner?
Bassine?
Nay.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Martin?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to our decision discussion agenda, can I get a motion to adopt item 5.01, the Personnel Report?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve 5.01 Personnel Report.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
First, I'd like to thank you for uh, accepting my request to have the Personnel Report considered separately. I appreciate uh, the hard work that is going in to try to make sure that um, we provide excellent teachers and staff for our, for our students. The, the reason why I asked for the Personnel Report, or the reasons that I asked for the Personnel Report to be pulled separately, uh, one, I would, I just continue to have a concern that um, you know, the research continues to tell us that schools that have, uh, in particular, who have large African-American populations, uh, especially those that are African-American populations and with concentrations of poverty, end up with uh, vacancies, uh, long-term subs, uh, staff that sometimes aren't experienced as others, and it also includes uh, administrators. And so I just want to continue to say to the Board that I believe we need to do an audit of our HR processes, that I think that um, some of our processes that are dealing with uh, where we place people and how we place people isn't necessarily being driven by performance, and I also think that we need to be much more intentional about prioritizing the schools where our data continues to show us that we have these long-term absences or that we end up with constant turnover at the administration and leadership level. And so I just want to, because we receive um, HR reports that we aren't able to discuss in closed session, I think having the Personnel Report considered separately gives the Board an opportunity to discuss those reports and to talk about how we align the recommendations that we receive, uh, as far as personnel is concerned, with the needs that the data tells us that, that we have. And so I thank you for allowing that discussion, and my intent is to continue to ask that the Personnel Report be pulled and continued and done separately until such time that we can come up with a plan to directly address the systemic issues that we have with long-term subs and vacancies and administration, administrative turnover at certain schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Ms. Tanner, please call the role.
Bassine?
Nay.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the monthly financial report. Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, uh, good evening again, Madam Chair. Uh, if I can adjust this a little? Okay. And if we can uh, get the report released this evening? Thank you. So, let's see. Okay, so good evening, Chairman Martin, members of the Board. Uh, the November financial report covers the five months for the fiscal year that started July 1st. During this period, we collected $115 million of general fund revenue, which was 32.4% of our budget. Collections for the same period in previous years was 32% in fiscal '21 last year and 39% in 2020. On page three, uh, we have a graph of revenue and spending for the year to date. By the end of November, we had spent uh, $120 million. That includes purchase orders that are outstanding. This was 34% of our $355 million budget, and again, our revenue was $115 million or a little lower. During the previous two years, spending for the same period was 35% of the budget um, for last year and 33% of the fiscal 2020 budget. So our spending rate is very similar to the previous two years. On page four, we have two graphs, one of revenue and the other of spending for each month of the year. The graphs present monthly revenue and spending for the current and the two previous years with the monthly um, budget added in the background. Uh, during November, we transferred $50,000 in school facilities, of the school facilities' budget, from materials to contract services in order to address contracted repairs to heating and ventilation systems. That was the only um, transfer in excess, in excess of $50,000. The November financial reports also include at the end a recommend, recommendation that um, is separate from the normal report. This includes recommendation request to supplemental appropriation from City Council for the, for which the school board action is required. There are four issues that we seek for the Board's approval. One is a request to appropriate $113.38 million of American Rescue Plan ESER grants for the purposes outlined on pages 19 and 20 of the financial report. Request to appropriate five and a third million dollars from the American Rescue Plan's state and local governments grant to improve heating, cooling, and ventilation systems in schools. This is a grant that Governor Northam recommended and that the General Assembly approved at the, uh, the latest session. Uh, the third item is a request to appropriate 1.65 million of unspent commun, Commonwealth Learning Loss Funds that we received in June of 2021. And finally, a request to appropriate 6.19 million of fiscal '21 funds that remained in three state-supported programs, the At-Risk Program, Intervention and Remediation Programs, and Early Reading Intervention. The Commonwealth permits the uh, use of these funds for replacement of lost revenue uh, during fiscal '22, the current year. Dr. Martin, that concludes my report for this evening. If you have any questions or any of the members, I'll be happy to address those.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Does anyone have questions? Ms. Bassine, go ahead. And then Mr. Jordan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Um, can you explain the $50,000 budget transfer um, from facilities to uh, contract services?
Uh, yes, it's, it remained with facilities. We simply transferred it from the um, uh, supply and material line to the contract service line. It, it did, it stayed in the same uh, group of accounts or the same- It, it did, it stayed in the same group of accounts or the same department. It was for our facility maintenance and repairs.
Okay, so I should be a little clearer. What contract services was that?
It would be repairs to heating and cooling, heating and cooling units.
For the heating and cooling?
Right, we would have had to hire a contractor to make specific repairs. I don't have, I can't tell you specifically which school, but that, it would be to, to do repairs on heating and cooling equipment in schools.
Okay, and so, in October, we heard from, from a teacher about the access to water. And I believe during that meeting, we discussed the potential of using funds to help support access to water in our schools. There was also discussion about the work being done to have water refilling stations. What is?
Those have been ordered, and they're being installed now.
Okay, so, but in the meantime, what solutions in terms of our financial report is being, what funds are being allocated to schools to help support the needs in between?
I'll defer to Dr. Birdsong.
Yes, I think it was in October or November when the question came out, came up about water. I tried to make it very clear that none of our schools should be without water. We are in the process now, I think there were a couple of schools that have already recently installed their water filling stations. We have hired two contractors to do this work over the winter break, and I'm hopeful, I'm not going to make any promises because I'm not physically doing the work myself, but we've hired two contractors to go out and make sure that the water filling stations are installed at all of our schools. And again, I'm hopeful that that work will be done over the break so that when our children return, they can have access to those water filling stations. In the interim, I know that when principals have had concerns about perhaps needing additional funding that their budget could not provide for water, they have reached out to their executive directors, and those funds have been made available. So there should not be any school or any child that does not have access to water throughout the school day.
Okay, thank you. Second, if I may, Dr. Martin, I have a couple more questions. So along with that, we have, well, I made a request earlier to separate out the ESER, or the author, the request for authorization from the School Board regarding the ESER funds. So I am not comfortable with this piece being included, as I've shared before. I also have concerns about the level of meaningful engagement that we've had around this spending, and also the Board's level of engagement around what the spending is going to go toward. So I personally would like to see this piece removed, as I've shared before, from, from the whole monthly financial report.
I have a question. Ms. Bassin, is there anything that you particularly disagree with, with the funds that have been appropriated by the Superintendent and the Administration?
Well, as I've expressed before, I personally, you know, looking at our data, and also hearing the immense behavioral and mental health needs of our students, I don't feel that we have sufficiently allocated the funds and resources necessary to support our classrooms and our schools and students, most importantly, including all of the different, you know, our, our students with disabilities, our English language learners. So there's a whole, you know, I, I have a list of things that I would like to see spending on if we could have dedicated discussion around these issues while also hearing from the community about what they would, beyond the survey that, that we have already collected information from.
Ms. Bassin, can you please repeat your initial request? Is it, are we looking at the recommendation on page 18? And are you saying that you would like to remove 1A?
So as, as I stated in an email sent earlier when this was posted, the request for supplemental appropriations from City Council, the page, the piece that starts on page 17, I was, you know, first, honestly, I was surprised that it was included in the monthly financial report this way. So I had requested to have that piece as a separate document to be voted on, if that was.
Page 17, which area? The whole page? I'm just trying to understand.
Not just the page, this whole section on the request. So in this request, it has the background of what is being requested, and then the project spending. So I wanted this whole second part of this monthly financial report to be separate, all the way from 17 to page 20.
Page 17 and 20?
To page 20.
To page 20.
Yeah, 17 through 20.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
To Dr. Birdsong or Mr. Jenkins. In regards to the ESER funds that are being requested and the grant that was submitted, I know that it's over a three-year span period, we submitted the grant. The recommendation is to ask for us, which we, in the process, which is to receive those funds because the funds go to the city of Norfolk. So we're asking for the city of Norfolk to send those funds over here. If we want, or there is changes that need to be made to the grant once we receive those funds, are we allowed to do that?
Okay, if I, if I could make, Dr. Birdsong?
I was just going to respond, yes, it is a three-year plan, and the plan needs to be based upon the school division's needs. And if needs change, certainly the plan, the plan can change. And I'd also like to address the, the input piece. So we were made aware of the federal funds in March, I believe, of, of last year, and then notification from the Virginia Department of Education in April. In July, we posted information about the plan so that we could get feedback from our stakeholders. We received, I believe, close to 2,865 responses, which is pretty doggone outstanding for our school division. And the majority of the respondents were parents. And we were very appreciative of that support and involvement, engagement from our parents. And I'm not going to mention the other groups, but I did want to mention our parents because I believe we received over 1,700 response from, from our parents. Additionally, there were some concerns about, as we are also concerned that we're in the middle of a pandemic, and it's often, it's been quite a challenge to bring people together. We committed to the School Board that we would find other ways to engage our community around this. So I was very pleased to hear that we had groups, community groups that spoke up today about their wanting to be, participate more in that process. We, the school division, the Administration, has already discussed and are prepared to move forward with providing some, some community forums, forums via Zoom so that we can get additional input. The plan is supposed to be reviewed, I believe it's every six months. So again, as the needs change, there's some flexibility there. Also, there was a concern mentioned about timely expenditure of funding. I know that if we continue to wait to have the Council appropriate this, we are going to have some issues with, with expending in a timely manner. I know, for example, it's going to take perhaps at least 17 weeks for HVAC things to, to, to actually be ordered and come back to the division. I, I just don't believe, I would not recommend that this Board wait to ask Council to appropriate this money, because there are things that we need to do now. And so I hope that responds to your question, Mr. Clanton.
So if I, if I may, Dr. Martin, I want to make sure that the meaningful consultation requirement is, is done, and it's done with fidelity and the respect that voices are being heard consistently. Now, if I'm hearing that there's a review every six months, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to do this, but, Mr. Jordan, you probably remember when we used to have kind of a, the Guiding Coalition back in the, in the day. But I really believe that we need to take action from this Board in the respect of standing up something that brings and, that does intentional about bringing those specific groups together, so that if it's every six months, coming those, with those particular updates, and getting that feedback as we go through this process. I know that it's additional time, but it's necessary. It's almost a feeling that I have when I heard about the, you know, we had a Safe and Secure Schools Task Force, and, now getting off topic, but that's something that needs to come back to the forefront, based on what I'm hearing, not just here tonight, but consistently. So I'm not in agreement about taking it away. I think we have to take action in the respect of appropriating and requesting the funds. But I am, and it's a compromise in the respect, to keep the process moving, that we need to come back, when we come back in January, working with the Administration to identify and stand up something. Like a kitchen cabinet in respect, that brings these specific identified voices to the table, and as we, every six months, that we're bringing them together, we're giving those the, the updates, that there is transparency in this process, and that the community feels that their voices are being heard, not just here at a meeting at a public hearing, but that their voices are being heard, and they're a part of the process. So I, I understand, and I hear my colleagues in the respective, but I'm, tonight, but I believe that we've got to request, we've got to keep the, we've got to keep the process moving. However, I do believe that when we come back, and then the next part of the, of the new year, that we need to take some, some action in respect of being intentional about making sure that those voices are heard as we go through this process. So with that, Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendations from the, I move to put a motion on the floor, because right now, we're out of order. I move to accept the recommendations that have been presented. I move to accept the recommendations that have been presented.
Madam Chair.
We already had a question on the floor.
There's not a question, I'm putting a motion.
Well, I, I called Mr. Jordan.
No, we were, we were allowing board members to ask questions. Ms. Bassin was first, I was second. I haven't had the opportunity to ask my questions. That's all.
Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you. So I appreciate Ms. Bassin's question. She asked a couple that I had. I also support her recommendation for separating out this action. I guess my first question is, when did you determine that a action of City Council was required for this?
I was advised by my expert, Mr. Jenkins, who, who, this is his area of expertise. We know that we can expend the funds. This is my understanding, and, and additional request because it's outside of our regular budget process. They haven't provided the funding to the, to the School Board, so it has to be requested because their budget is going to change as a result of these funds.
Yeah, and I was, I appreciate you answer, I was asking Mr. Jenkins, but even, if he was still also.
Yes, if I'd like also to clarify something Mr. Clanton mentioned. The city of Norfolk has to actually appropriate and approve any money that we spend. Just one clarification, the, the ARPA money, or the, the American Rescue money, didn't actually go to the city. It's, the state is holding the funds. But we can't, and the state reimburses us as we spend them. But we don't have the authority to spend until the City Council raises the total amount of our budget, and that's the action that we're requesting. So under the state law, we, as a School Board funded by the city of Norfolk, can't spend anything that the city has not actually taken formal action to approve. So they approve our entire budget in the spring, and generally, we go forth for the entire year. This grant showed up at the very tail end of the development of our current year's budget. The Act was only approved in March of 2021. You took action on the bu, on the budget that same month. Information from the Department of Ed started coming to us, that is, the Virginia Department of Ed, in April. So this is not in the budget, but there's a clock ticking, as Dr. Birdsong said.
So my question was, when, when was it that you determined that this action of Council was, was required?
We, we knew this as soon as the, as we became aware that there was, that these funds would be available to us. So we knew this in March. We did not know how much it was going to be. We had some clue as to what it would be, but we did not get information about the magnitude of the funding until April.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is because when we were having our discussions in April and about the use of these funds, I shared multiple times that, that this was required. Also, the State Superintendent's report, I think it came out as early as February, began to share what, what our allocation potentially would be, so I was surprised.
Sir, the Congress did not act on this bill until March.
That's, that's not what I said. I said that there were preliminary reports, there were allocations that were coming from the State Superintendent alerting school divisions about the potential allocation based upon Title I and other funding mechanisms that were there. That's, that's what I've said, I'm not disagreeing with.
In that time period, we were, respectfully, in that time period, we were receiving information about the CRRS A grant that Congress took action on in December of 2020.
Yes, my, my, the point that I'm making is, is that I was surprised to see this as part of the monthly financial report at, at this point in time. But I will continue with my questions at the, based upon the report that we have. So as part of the, this report, we are, again, I'll go back to the page where it showed the percentages. So right now, based upon what we've submitted, we are planning to spend 23% of our allocation on addressing learning loss. And then, under other costs, we have 77% being spent on other costs. And then there's a line that says ventilation system upgrades, equipment, $56.4 million. So that $56.4 million is only for ventilation system upgrades?
That is to replace heating, cooling, and air conditioning units within a fairly large number of buildings, around 30, Mr. Freely? Around 30 buildings.
But just for clarity, that's, that's ventilation system upgrades only?
Well, it's the heating, cooling, and air conditioning systems. It's in order to ensure that fresh air is actually coming into the buildings. Many of, many of the older buildings have, what would you, what you call are closed loops? That is, there's not fresh air coming in, or the.
Yeah, I understand the ventilation system, I just want to be clear.
Yes.
That where it says $56.4 million is for ventilation systems only.
That, that and another 3.6 to install, yes.
Okay, and going back to the conversation we were having about citizen input, I appreciate what my colleague, Mr. Clanton, said, but I just think that is a routine action that we, that we do. We, we take action without meaningful input and consultation. We submit plans without public hearings and community input. Then we come back after the fact and say, oh, we'll go back and have conversations later. And I don't think necessarily we have a very good track record of then going back and doing what we say. For example, the issue of the meaningful consultation that was mentioned tonight regarding civil rights organization, I mentioned that in this meeting and said something about it several times. And the promise was made, the commitment was made, we would go back and do something about it. And we have individuals coming to the microphone tonight saying that there has, there has been none. So when we go to this portion where it indicates that we've had citizen input in the surveys that we have from parents and others that responded, do we have any type of demographic profile of those who answered the survey?
I don't believe that we asked for, for race, or, and I could be wrong, but I, I don't think we asked for, for, for that demographic information.
Right, yeah, I don't, I don't think we did, and I think I, my, one of the concerns that I had was that in the absence of being intentional about trying to make sure that we captured that data, we have really no way of knowing how representative of the community the input that we received is. And so we, we talked about this before, and I think it's very important that we, that we, that we know that and, and do that. So I support Ms. Bassin's request, I think. So I support, uh, Ms. Bassin's request, I think it should be considered separately. I don't think it slows down any time if we're going to do it, uh, this evening. But I am concerned about this process where, uh, something like this, as significant as this, gets, um, added to a monthly financial report and doesn't receive the due diligence that it deserves in order to address, um, the needs of the community and to me, especially around learning loss. Almost every comment we had tonight either dealt with social, emotional learning, security, uh, the needs of children, the, the data that we've seen, we were talking about goals and guardrails, the data that we saw at the last meeting shows significant needs of our children when it comes to, uh, learning loss, or as many talk about it, which I prefer, uh, continuous learning or advancing learning. And so this allocation and this plan that we submitted without the adequate community input, to me, is, is really missing the, missing the mark. And I've said that, uh, for six months now. And I think it's something that we can't just talk about what we might do. I think we need to do what the guidance requires us to do and have meaningful, uh, impact, especially for our children of color, which our data shows us, clear as day, are disproportionately suffering from the pandemic and were suffering prior to the pandemic. So that's, I just, I just think that we need to be far more intentional and stop saying things and then come back later and talk about we're going to do stuff and then we don't do it. So I think it should be separate. I expressed that when I saw it on Friday. I saw Ms. Bassin's email expressing it and, uh, and I think we could do a much better job of presenting to the public what this really means, how it impacts, uh, and even the conversation that we had about the water. And I brought this up before about the, the water. And, um, so the comment was made that water filling stations are starting to get installed in schools. So which funding stream is supporting the water filling station, uh, implementation?
That is coming out of the CRRS A grant, I believe. It's one of the coronavirus grants. I believe it's the one that was approved, uh, by Congress in December.
Is there a, uh, implementation schedule on which schools are going to get, uh, implemented first or when, or is there a schedule?
Uh, there, I, I think, yeah, I mean, there's certainly, um, a, a plan to, to deploy them at every single school.
Right, no, I understand that there's a plan to do it at every single school. My question is, is there a schedule that shows which schools will go first?
Well, we can tell you that, I, I know that Lake Taylor High School, that recently, that the filling stations were installed there. I've been told, as well as the Lake Taylor School. And I can't imagine that, 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 that there's not a schedule, um, for this operational issue. Mr. Fraley, am I correct in that?
There is a schedule.
Yeah, I, I appreciate it being operational, but I also appreciate that there is, there are equity issues and the board has a responsibility for monitoring and we can't monitor what we don't see. So I'm not trying to tell you how to implement water fill, water filling stations, but I would like to see is it aligns with our goals and objectives, that it's going to be done in a way that is, uh, equitable and fair and based upon data and needs. So those are my questions for now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Um, Dr. Birdsong, can you remind me, how many people responded to that survey?
Oh, my goodness, it was about 2,865. I might be a couple off, but close to that.
Okay, thank you. Um, well, does anyone want to, can I get a motion to remove pa, pages 17 through 20 from this report?
I have another point before we make a motion on it. Um, Dr. Birdsong, the funds that we're talking about removing, are these the funds that Congressman Scott talked about that he's, uh, sent to us?
I'm not certain. I can't speak to that.
The AR, the AR, S R funds, three years' worth of funding, is this three years' worth of funding from the federal government?
This, these are ARPA funds and they, they do cover three years, but I'm not familiar.
Yeah, so these are the funds that Congressman Scott's been talking about. Uh, the only other question I had, um, back to, uh, to this, to Mr. Jordan is, if we pull it, we, we do, we do, um, the things that you're asking to be done, um, what do you, I mean, what's the plan? What's the game plan? What do you?
What's the end goal here?
Well, number, number one, I speak for myself, number one, I'm just asking that it be considered separately.
Okay.
Number two, I think that as part of our work sessions and the work that we're doing, we should have aligned our plans with our data that we were looking at so that we wouldn't be at this, at this point now, so that the board and the public would have a clear understanding of where we are. As I said, for me, I think the, uh, what, what Congressman Scott was advocating, as I understand it, was that school boards are receiving this, this chunk of funds and that we have an opportunity with these chunk of funds to close gaps that have systemically existed for years. And so to me, if we look at our data and we look at our gaps, just because the legislation says that you must spend at least 20% on learning loss, doesn't mean that we can't prioritize 30, 40, 50%, if that's what is required in order to address these equity gaps and the learning loss that we have. I think that based upon the data that we've seen, that we have significant issues, especially around our African-American students, and that this is an opportunity to use these funds to address those needs. And, you know, in, in some work that I've done separately, when you look at the, uh, learning loss that has happened across the Commonwealth of Virginia, the gap that Norfolk Public Schools has from where we were prior to the pandemic to where we are now in the pandemic, that data that we looked at, we are showing some of the largest gaps between pre-pandemic and pandemic than, than any other, than most other school divisions in the, in the Commonwealth. And so we've got to be able to have those conversations and then be clear, intentional, and targeted on the use of these funds. I'm sorry that we're just getting to this point now, but I felt like we had opportunities for this as far back as April, when we started discussing all the CIP and ed planning and all those other kind of things. And I just don't trust that we're going to come back in January and have these community forums. We should have done it in, um, prior to submitting the plan. And if we are going to talk about it, I'd like to see something that's concrete, that's going to show that we're truly going to, uh, to do this. Otherwise, you know, to quote the philosopher, James Brown, is just talking loud and saying nothing.
Okay, again.
How much time do we have to do this? I mean, if we weren't to take, if we weren't to take action tonight, how much time do we have that we have to take action and request these funds? Do we know?
I'm sorry, Mr. Clanton.
In other words, if we don't take action tonight on this particular item, how much, what is the deadline that we have to request these funds?
Well, I mean, if you don't take action tonight, then you're pushing this one, at least one month into the future. Um, we have less than three years to spend 113 million. That is a bigger grant than we have ever received. It's about 10 times the size of our normal Title I grant. In three years.
Dr. Gabriel, go ahead. Oh, Ms., Ms. Kamson hasn't, so go ahead.
Ms. Kamson. I don't disagree with, with what we need to do with the funds and the fact that we need to focus on the kids that are the most needy. I think we all are sitting here agreeing with that. I'm just not sure why taking this one part of our budget out makes that, makes that happen. I, I'm not understanding the, the, the under, the need for pulling it out. Are you saying that you don't want to vote on, you want that piece removed so it's not voted on and then it sits there for the next month? Or are you saying you want it pulled out and totally revised on how the spending goes, which will take us more time? In other words, what's the point of not voting on this particular chunk today? Mr. Jordan, perhaps?
Oh, question for me?
Yeah, well, I, yes, I'm sorry, I should have said that.
Okay, thank you. So, so just, just to try to be clear, so I think we ought to be voting on this request of council. I think we should have already voted on the request to council. I think that the process that we use in order to tell council how we want to spend the money should be, should have been much more inclusive and driven by the data that we have. And so we had those discussions as a board. When I saw the monthly financial report on Friday, it just shocked me because I was under the impression that, that the belief was we did not need to, to do this. So the reason why I'm asking for it to be pulled, and I think it should be delayed, is because I think we need to make sure that we get it right. And so if we are saying to, to council and to the public that we think that, uh, spending 23% of our, of this allocation on addressing learning loss is adequate, I'd just like to hear a much more clear presentation I think we have received to date that demonstrates that that 23% is going to be adequate. My feeling was, we got so enamored with the physical plant, and we all know that the physical plant needs to be addressed, that we were missing the mark when it came to addressing the needs of students. And I personally feel that what we have just seen in the last 30 days even further amplifies the importance of the social, emotional needs, the counselors, making sure that we, if we need to provide supports to retain teachers, all those things that we listed in the accountability plan, ensuring that this 113 million dollars and probably money that we've already received and haven't spent yet, is truly going to do what Congressman Scott has asked us to do. At the end of three years.
Mr. Jordan, back.
We can look back and say we achieved something.
Right, and thanks for sharing that, kind of what you've already said.
Mm-hmm.
But what I'm saying is, I'm not understanding why blocking it tonight so that we can't continue on, why can't we continue on as we make adjustments as we see needed? And certainly that's something the board can do when we're back in January at our next work session, perhaps, and discuss if we want to do some shifting around. But why, why stop the process tonight? In other, I, I'm not understanding that.
I'm only stopping.
I don't need to hear all of your reasons, I just want to know how does it impact, Mr. Jenkins, how, how does taking that section out for the vote tonight, then it just sits over here, right?
Well, I mean, it would seem to me that you could vote on the two matters separately tonight, that I, I mean, if you separated them, I mean, I'll leave that to Mr. Cloud, but you could.
Okay, so if we separate them, we still have the chunk that everyone's the most concerned about, just sitting there, we can't move it, can't start using, you can't start making interventions for our, our, our schools and our children?
We, we, our, our ability to spend is severely hampered until council actually takes action.
So if we then, if we then go ahead and approve it tonight at the same time, then we're meeting in January, and perhaps we should have done this sooner, um, then we have a, a gap of time as the clock is ticking, because we only have three years, um, don't we then have a gap of time that we delay the work that we want to do for the kids? That's the whole point here. The whole point of getting this money is to do what we need to do for children. Maybe we need to discuss it and get a finer line there of what's going where, but it, it, it seems to me, and I'm not an accountant, that's for sure, but it seems like we're slowing the process down of, of spending the money so that, and we, we have, you know, we've seen in the past what happens when we get behind the timeline, the timeline is the timeline, on spending the money. I would not want to have us returning it to the federal government so that our children don't get the money they need. So that's what I'm trying to clarify in my mind before it goes to a vote.
If, if you vote on it tonight, if you were to approve it tonight, we would notify city council or the, the city staff and ask that they put it, uh, put it on a future council agenda. We're hopeful that that would take place in January. If you defer your action until January, then it's probably, would be February before council would act. So, I mean, there's, there's going to be time between your action and council's action.
So it sounds like what you're saying is that if we don't move ahead with it, that we're going to delay the funds rolling into the needs for the children?
Well, it slows our, it slows our ability to, to actually implement the plan.
All right, all right, thank you very much. I don't want to take us here all night, but thank you.
Can I get a motion to separate pages 17 through 20?
Dr. Martin, I propose that we, um, accept the financial, uh, presentation with the amendment of removing pages 17 through 20.
Can I get a second? Mr. Jordan seconded. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Kamson?
Nay.
Clanton?
Nay.
Gabriel?
Aye. Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, can I get a motion to, um, I guess we'll call the, the one through 16, section A, and then 17 through 20, section B?
Yeah, there's, Dr. Martin, there's, right, two recommendations there. There's one to receive and file the financial report and there's two to approve the request.
Recommendation one is separated and two and three to go.
Okay. Can I get a motion to accept recommendation one?
Dr. Martin, I move that we, um, accept recommendation one.
Second.
Seconded, okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Tanner, please call up a roll.
Wait, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm not quite sure, all right, we just voted on whether or not to separate them and we decided to separate them.
Yes.
All right.
Now we're voting on accepting them separately.
Okay, and so part one is 17 and back, and part two is after 17.
Yeah, so Madam Chair, just to, for clarity and for the public, it's saying a recommendation one is increase grants appropriation for the American Rescue Plan S R Grant and, um, as well as the American Rescue Plan CL F R F Grant, and for a total increase of grant applications of 118,711,246.
Confused.
I have a, I have a point of clarification.
That's recommendation one.
No, there's two recommendations. One is to receive and file. If you look at the cover page, the administration gave us a cover page. It has number one, receive and file the November 2021 financial highlights and budget report, which we do every month. So that, number one is the monthly financial report. Number two is approved request for supplemental appropriation from Norfolk City Council as noted in addendum to financial and budget report. So the first item is to simply approve and receive the monthly financial report as we always do. The second item deals with this supplemental appropriation that normally is not attached to a monthly financial report.
So Dr. Martin, I move that the board, uh.
I rescind my motion, go ahead. I just, I rescind my motion, go ahead.
Oh, louder, louder, okay. Uh, Madam Chair, I move that the board receives, uh, and approves the financial report presented for November 2021, including the financial highlights and budget report, which is item one on the document presented as the agenda item report cover.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin?
This is just the monthly financial report.
Yes. Correct, okay.
Aye. Kamson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, can I get a motion to accept number two, the, um, supplemental appropriation from Norfolk City Council as noted in the amend, addendum to the financial and budget report?
Madam Chair, I move to accept the items as you had just mentioned previously.
Second. One, one question.
I'm not sure I understand this one again.
Okay, I'll outline it.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the request for the supplemental appropriation from the Norfolk City Council as noted in the addendum to the financial and budget report.
Page 18.
And Mr. Clanton, something?
Yes.
Ms. Tan.
I have a question, Dr. Martin.
Ms., um, Ms. Kamson, do you understand that?
Uh, yeah, Dr. Birdsong, clarifying.
Page 18.
Okay, page 18. Okay, Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Uh, either Dr. Birdsong or, uh, Mr. Jenkins, on the school division's website, we currently, uh, the last couple of weeks, sent out something on our, uh, implementation plan. Uh, I can't remember the exact title of it. And what I, do you understand what I'm referring to, uh, Dr. Birdsong? The, the state plan, we, we had a state plan that we submitted in September, and then there's something that we have out now that we're asking feedback on to. On the school division's website, we currently, uh, the last couple of weeks, sent out something on our, uh, implementation plan. Uh, I can't remember the exact title of it. And what I, do you, do you understand what I'm referring to, uh, Dr. Birdsong? The, the state plan, we, we had a state plan that we submitted in September, and then there's something that we have out now that we're asking feedback on to, uh, amend the plan. I'd emailed you and Dr. Paul about it and, uh, because I was trying to figure out the changes that were being made. Is that plan tied to this supplemental appropriation?
No, that, that was the instructional plan, if I recall that specific email, which I may not be. Um, but I, I think that was related to the implementation plan of the instructional plan. Am I not right? There've been so many surveys and feedback, but I think that was the instructional plan. There were some, um, updates to that.
So the, the requirements for the ESSR three ARP funds, there are two parts. One was the Safe Return to In-Person Learning and Mitigation Strategy Plan, which we first posted June first of twenty twenty-one, so the six-month date was December first. So amendments were made from that because the way we had planned to open school changed because of the, the spike, um, in COVID. And then the second requirement is the spending plan, which is a requirement that was posted August first, and the next requirement is February first. So those were the two parts of this. But the Safe Return to In-Person Learning Plan doesn't dictate your spending plan, so they're separate in that fashion.
Right, but my question is, the, the resources that are being considered in the supplemental appropriation, do they support, or would they support this plan that you currently have out for public consideration?
They, they would be some of the support, but not necessarily all of the support.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
And just for clarity, the reason I asked was when we, when we did that, this is, is just another opportunity for public input, and I just want to make sure that, at least as one board member, I have an understanding between what we are submitting, saying that we are going to do, and how we are getting meaningful consultation and input beyond just filling out surveys. And that's why I was trying to get clear on whether the two are connected. Thank you.
Okay, um, we got a, okay, Ms. Tanner, please call the question.
Dr. Martin?
Yes?
I apologize, but would you mind just doing a quick discussion? Just, I, I had a comment that I wanted to make, and Ms. Kamson spoke, and then we kind of went into the, to the vote, so if we could just do a discussion piece and then go into the vote, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't know you had something to say. Go ahead.
So, um, I really do appreciate the conversation that we've had thus far with regarding, um, reviewing the data, uh, engaging in meaningful conversation. We, we are in a process of continuous improvement. This pandemic has stretched us all to the limits, our teachers, our staff, our children, our parents. And I really do, I, I just want to say, number one, we asked for data from the administration, they provided it to us. So the reason that we know that we are seeing these gaps, the reason that we see the, uh, the, the highlighted groups, African-American disabilities, all of that is because they have been looking at the data, which, number one, I truly appreciate. Number two, I look to Dr. Birdsong and her team as the educational experts. They are the ones who, um, have the ability to know what is in their wheelhouse to make the maximum impact on the resources that they have. Now, can we as board members provide meaningful input and community stakeholders also say, please don't forget these groups, or please highlight extra on these groups? Absolutely, we need to do that. Um, but they know what heavy lifting they can do for the children. And when I look at the plan and I see that her number one priority is extended school programs, and there's thirteen million dollars allotted to that, and then the next priority is mental health, and I see millions of dollars allocated to that, and then I see a whole section on special populations. I can't disagree with that, and I can't disagree with holding up the funds, knowing that we can always come back to the table in a continuous improvement process and engage and reallocate funds as needed. And so with that, I'm going to be voting in support of the outline presented, knowing that we always have the ability to come back and change things, um, as we should, a- as we are a due, uh, as we should do our due diligence, uh, with continuously reviewing the data. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Uh, yes.
I'm gonna, I'm sorry, Mr. Jordan, because you, you've had the opportunity, I'm gonna give it to Ms. Basine, and then you can go.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Basine.
Uh, thank you. Um, I understand the need, the urgency around, uh, doing this. However, I too don't trust that we're going to come back to it and really dive in, um, based on other recent examples of where we have said that we're going to come back it, come back and have further discussion, and that really is worrisome to me. Yes, these priorities are listed here, but based on the data that we have seen and the inequities that we have seen, I don't feel that this, uh, addresses those issues, uh, as succinctly and as sufficiently as I think it, it needs to for, in the best interest of our students. Um, so I will not be voting in support of this.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Yeah, I just have one additional statement. First of all, I appreciate what Dr. Gabriel said, and I just wanted to piggyback off of something that she said. The equity provisions and the civil rights provisions and the justice provisions that are in these relief funds are there with intention. The, the, uh, Biden administration, as they came in and as they ran and eventually won, said that they were going to restore these provisions around equity. Uh, the work that was done with, um, uh, ESSR, uh, was intentional about doing equity. And so the reason that the guidelines said that there needed to be meaningful stakeholder conversations and particularly spelled out, uh, organizations dealing with students with special needs, civil rights organizations, uh, uh, individuals who have been historically margin, marginalized, those groups that were identified align exactly with the resolution that this school board passed after George Floyd. And so I'm sorry that we're here in this position. I think we could have dealt with it further, but the board did not put us in this position. I'm sorry, the timing is what it is. But I don't think we can continue, on the one hand, say that we're for equity and opportunity and justice, and then when it's time for us to act, always come to the provision of, well, gee, time won't allow us to do it. So I think now is the time to be able to demonstrate that we believe what we say and take an opportunity to have some meaningful stakeholder input and make sure that what's being proposed truly is going to advance the learning and other needs that we've talked about, and then go forward and tell council what we would like for them to do, just as council in their own process helped plenty of forums and have, I think, as far as I can tell, are still trying to get input from their perspective. So I think it's an opportunity for this board to truly demonstrate that when we say equity and opportunity, we mean it. And that's why I think we can take the opportunity to do that and come back in January and take action. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I am not going to prolong the discussion here. Um, I've heard my colleagues, um, and I, and I agree. I, I don't believe in passing policy or doing certain things and letting them sit on, on shelves for a long time. Um, I believe in taking action, and, um, I do believe that we need to, um, to make the requests on these funds. However, as I mentioned about standing up, um, a community stakeholder group and directing the superintendent, that is the responsibility of the board, and I intend, after we make this motion, to make that motion so that it is a directive to the superintendent to come back with that in September.
Okay, Ms. Tanner, please call the question.
Basine?
Nay.
Kamson?
Aye.
Gabe, Clanton, excuse me?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, thank you. All right, um. What's that? I'm looking, I'm pulling it up right now. Um, that's it?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, um, in regard to this last item here. I move that the board direct the superintendent to stand up a group of community stakeholders um, to accomplish, uh, the requ- the requirements of, uh, ESSR funds, eighty-six FR two one one nine five dash zero one, the American Rescue Plan Act Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, and to present, um, and to present this in January, um, of twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, so as the maker of the motion, Madam Chair, as I just stated before, um, I don't want to have this, this idea that we're just talking and not taking action. So, in, in regards to this, this is my recommendation to the board to take action and to direct the superintendent. Superintendent needs clear direction on this particular item here. Um, I agree, um, as one of the requirements in here is that there's about thirty hours of staff time that needs to be taking place in regards for meaningful consultation and engagement. And so I want to be able, I can't fix, or any of us can fix, what's happened in the past there. Um, but I do believe that if it's every six months an evaluation, that if the board is giving a direction to the superintendent to identify these groups, which has already been identified for us, to stand that up and bring it in there, it sends a strong message to the community that we want to be transparent and we want to hear this information, and it gives us an identifiable timetable to come back and look at. So that's why I'm putting this forth.
Uh, Dr. Birdsong, do you want to comment to this?
No, because I, I, I mentioned, um, at the beginning, that's what our plan was.
Okay.
I have, uh, further discussion. Dr. Martin?
Yes?
Discussion on the motion. So, I, you know, I appreciate the, the effort. The guidelines already exist. We were required to do this as a school division already. We have, uh, special education advisory committees and gifted advisory committees and education planning committees and all kinds of groups and task forces, where we have had every opportunity to be engaging and transparent and intentional if we wanted to. So I don't think it's necessary to create some subgroup. We need to be intentional about trying to reach everyone. And that includes our advisory boards and others that have already been volunteering. So I support the concept. I don't think it's necessary. I think the board already has given the superintendent direction. I just think the board needs to be mindful and knowledgeable about the requirements that we have when we vote on things. And I just think we just need to support the superintendent and give her the resources that she needs to be able to carry out the meaningful community engagement work that we've talked about. That's why we approved the chief community engagement officer. That's why we had all the work that we did around advisory committees. We need to pay attention to what comes before us and make sure that we understand it and then act on it when we have the opportunity to act on it, not just rush and then come back later and say, I'm sorry that we, that we messed up, we want to fix it. I don't think the, the motion, the recommendation is necessary, and I don't think it's good practice to, uh, just come up with these directions to the superintendent in this, in this way. So that's why I don't support the motion, but I do support the intent behind the motion.
So with that, Madam Chair, uh, thank you, Mr. Jordan, for agreeing in the respect that we need to let the superintendent do her job. Um, if we've already given that direction and it's clear and the superintendent has identified that she's going to do that, um, then we already have also identified that we have those stakeholder groups in place. And so I agree with you. We don't need this motion. It's already been done. Um, and so we will be paying attention, um, but I just want to make it very clear to those who are watching tonight because I don't want it to be said coming back that we didn't take action and that we didn't give clear direction in a motion. So, Dr. Birdsong, you clear about what we, what we're asking for?
I am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I rescind the motion. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Okay, well, thank you. This is a wonderful discussion. Um, so with that, I adjourn the meeting.